Okay, good afternoon and welcome. I'm Dan Garodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's City Planning Commission Review Session of May 8th, 2023. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Bozorg, Cerulo, Crowell, Dweck, Kermani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershead. Welcome to all of you. We have an important presentation today on the Department of City Planning's Eds and Meds Framework for Downtown Brooklyn and Fort Greene, building on the recommendations from the New York Panel to revitalize our Central Business District as vibrant 24/7 communities. We are calling this Eds and Meds because of important expansion proposals that we are expecting from two vital Brooklyn institutions, Long Island University and the Brooklyn Hospital Center. Like all our work, we are keen to make sure that we are planning ahead equitably and holistically for major public and private investments. On today's agenda, we'll also discuss two proposals that had public hearings before the Commission last month. More on these in a few minutes. Before that, I want to make note of the really strong reception that we have had so far on the City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality Proposal, which, as you all know, is in public review as of our last session, our last review session here two weeks ago. We've received supportive letters from more than a dozen major organizations, including the New York League of Conservation Voters, the Regional Plan Association, the Urban Green Council, and We Act for Environmental Justice. Among others, several of our sister agencies, including the Fire Department and the Landmarks Preservation Commission, who help enforce building safety and historic preservation codes, also wrote in support. You can find these letters at nyc.gov/yescarbonneutrality. I also recommend that everybody read the favorable op-ed that ran in Gotham Gazette on April 26th by Jolie Millstein, President and CEO of the New York State Association for Affordable Housing. We look forward to further discussing City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality with the community boards, borough boards, and borough presidents in the next couple of months before it comes back to us for a hearing. Last week, I attended a couple of events with Mayor Adams that showcased the importance of long-term planning and of following through on promises made to local communities. In Brooklyn, Mayor Adams announced nearly $500 million in support of Broadway Junction, bringing accessibility upgrades, improved streets, and new open space to this transit-rich area of Brooklyn that has been overlooked for far too long. This announcement of funding from the mayor and the New York City Economic Development Corporation follows the Department of City Planning-led 2016 East New York Neighborhood Plan, which is already bringing income-restricted homes and improved parks like the Callahan-Kelly Park where last week's announcement took place. The Broadway Junction announcement and the East New York Neighborhood Plan show the city's commitment to holistic planning that brings all city agencies to the table and our commitment to transit-oriented development. And in Astoria, we cut the ribbon on a new 100% income-restricted building with around 160 homes for New Yorkers, including NYCHA tenants and formerly homeless people. This is the latest development out of our ongoing planning work for Halitz Point, which began in 2013. One building at a time, our vision of more equitable neighborhoods and boroughs is coming into view as we get stuff done. Looking forward, I encourage everyone to join Councilmember Crystal Hudson, Councilmember of Crystal Hudson and the Department of City Planning tonight for a community planning workshop on the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan. During this open house, City Planning will share project and process updates with the public and get feedback on the plan's community recommendations so far. It runs from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., and members of the public are welcome to drop in or leave at any time, although, once you drop in, you're just going to want to stay for the whole thing. Am I right, Alex? Okay. Moving to our Commission's agenda today, as I've said, we're kicking things off with a presentation on the Department of City Planning's Downtown Brooklyn and Fort Greene Eds and Meds Framework. This early planning work will help guide public and private investments and land use, including any future development plans of anchor institutions LIU and the Brooklyn Hospital Center, to make sure they support neighborhood and city priorities. By releasing this framework ahead of anticipated development proposals, City Planning is following through on its commitment to proactive outreach and engagement with New Yorkers. We are laser-focused on ensuring that jobs hubs in Downtown Brooklyn, Dumbo, and the Brooklyn Navy Yard and local communities, including Whitman, Ingersoll, and Farragut Houses, are healthy, vibrant, and connected. There'll be many further opportunities for engagement on this framework and future proposals in this area as well. We look forward to those. Besides Eds and Meds, today we will prep for Wednesday's public hearings and discuss what we heard at last month's public hearings for two Queens projects. Those projects are the Ocean Crest rezoning for 100% affordable, resilient building with over 100 homes at 2932 Beach Channel Drive in Bayswater, and de-mapping a portion of 43rd Avenue between 222nd and 223rd Street in Bayside to make an existing retaining wall legal. So, with that, Ryan, let's kick it off. I'm going to turn it to you, and we look forward to getting right into our marquee proposal of the day.
Certainly. So, before we begin our regular agenda, we have a special presentation by Alex Sommer and Amrita Mahesh of the Brooklyn Office on the Framework for the Future of Long Island City University and Brooklyn Hospital.
Thank you. My name is Alex Sommer. I'm the Director of the Brooklyn Office. I'm joined by Amrita Mahesh, Brooklyn Senior Urban Designer and Planner for Community District Two. It's our pleasure to be able to bring the Eds and Meds Framework for Downtown Brooklyn and Fort Greene to the Commission today. This is a showcase of the early planning work undertaken by department staff across many divisions and with the help of staff from multiple city agencies. In presenting this material now, we see this as a peek inside our thought process, reiterating the department's commitment to increase transparency and civic engagement, coming to you in the public far in advance of any development proposals or studies. We're proactively planning with our partner agencies and ensuring current and anticipated growth is put in the context of local infrastructure needs. It's our hope that this framework can be a useful toolkit for residents, advocates in nonprofit organizations, developers, and public agencies, and lay the groundwork for meaningful community engagement moving forward. The Eds and Meds Framework is specifically focusing on the evolution of the educational and medical sectors in and around Brooklyn's Central Business District and supports Downtown Brooklyn and Fort Greene's continued growth as a vibrant 24/7 neighborhood with thriving businesses, community facilities, and more opportunities for housing. Specifically, Eds and Meds will inform anticipated development plans in and around two important New York City educational and medical institutions, Long Island University and Brooklyn Hospital Center. The LIU and Brooklyn Hospital campuses are located between Flatbush Avenue Extension to the west and Fort Greene Park to the east. The institutions are undertaking both near-term and long-term redevelopment plans to expand and modernize their facilities while also adding new uses like housing, office, and retail. Their long-term plans to grow have the potential to be impactful, not only for these institutions but for the surrounding area and borough as a whole. This provides the impetus for us to think more comprehensively about these two campuses and consider their growth in the context of planning objectives for the Central Business District and the surrounding neighborhoods, including the public housing communities and nearby job centers in Dumbo and the Brooklyn Navy Yard. During today's presentation, we'll talk about a few different geographies at different scales. First, the largest geography is the Greater Central Business District, which includes the job centers of Downtown Brooklyn, Dumbo, and the Brooklyn Navy Yard. This is outlined in the dotted line and includes LIU and the Brooklyn Hospital campuses in blue, as well as NYCHA's Ingersoll, Walt Whitman, and Farragut communities highlighted in yellow. The slightly smaller geography is the Downtown Brooklyn Core, which is roughly the same geography as the Special Downtown Brooklyn District, which was last rezoned as part of the city-led initiative in 2004 and is outlined in the solid gray line. Finally, there are two main north-south corridors, Flatbush Avenue and Ashland Place and Navy Street, both indicated by arrows. They connect Dumbo, Vinegar Hill, and the Navy Yard to the north, and the Cultural District and Atlantic Terminal to the south. Next, we'd like to provide a little historical context as how we got here today. With the construction of the Brooklyn Bridge, Brooklyn Shipping and Warehouse Hub expanded out from the East River and the low-lying Fulton Ferry area into an office, retail, entertainment, and civic center, coalescing in the heights around Court Street and Borough Hall, the original city hall for an independent city of Brooklyn. By the early 20th century, this area saw a building boom of department stores, theaters, and office buildings, eventually spreading even further eastward along Fulton Street towards Flatbush Avenue and the LIRR Atlantic Avenue Station. This development exuberance moving eastward was best encapsulated by the construction of the Williamsburg Savings Bank Tower, which in 1928, the Brooklyn Eagle said was, quote, "tangible evidence of the fact that the LIRR station is soon to become as fine a commercial corridor as a district further downtown around Borough Hall." This development trend would have likely continued. However, a mere seven months after the tower's completion in 1929, Wall Street collapsed and the Great Depression started, halting development in the area for a generation, and so a lonely skyscraper sat stranded amongst two- and four-story brownstones. After the end of World War II, efforts to plan for and develop downtown Brooklyn started back up. However, unlike the previous years of privately initiated development, the city undertook more than two decades of master planning and urban renewal, including the Civic Center Master Plan, which guided the demolition of scores of blocks at the base of the Brooklyn and Manhattan Bridges, construction of the Brooklyn Queens Expressway, the creation of Cabin Plaza, and the development of NYCHA's public housing communities. Master planning efforts continued with proposals identified in the 1969 Plan for New York City, which sought to support the growing Central Business District with anchor institution expansions, including what is now the LIU campus. Between the 1970s and the late 1990s, the city undertook investments to bolster neighborhood assets, such as the Albee Square Mall, a former theater, and Fulton Mall, Brooklyn's main regional shopping corridor. This included streetscape improvements for pedestrianization to help compete with suburban mall expansions taking place in other parts of the region. Plans were also put forth for the Metro Tech Campus, envisioned as a 4 million-square-foot back-office complex with a 3.5 acres of public open space, providing attractive, modern, and lower-cost office space in support of businesses in the Financial District and Midtown Manhattan. Concerted planning initiatives started in the early 2000s at the city, state, and federal levels to spur commercial development. Of note was the Senate's Group of 35 Report, which focused specifically on increasing commercial office capacity in central business districts outside of Lower and Midtown Manhattan, including downtown Brooklyn. The Special Downtown Brooklyn District was established in 2001 under the Unified Bulk Program, which exempted the area from certain height limits, instituted modest density increases from manufacturing to commercial and residential districts, and some contextual transition areas were mapped along the edge of the CBD. Subsequently, as part of the 2004 Downtown Brooklyn Plan, high-density zoning was put into place to facilitate the growth of the Central Business District, including some areas east of Flatbush Avenue. In the years since the 2004 rezoning, the Flatbush Avenue corridor has seen significant transformation, and the Williamsburg Savings Bank is lonely no more. In 2009, the state-led Atlantic Yards General Project Plan, now known as Pacific Park, facilitated the construction of the 18,000-seat Barclay Center Arena and more than 3,000 apartments, with more on the way. The city invested in the Brooklyn Cultural District and leveraged city-owned sites like City Point to support cultural, nonprofit, shopping, and affordable housing, and constructed streetscape improvements like a revamped Flatbush Avenue extension. Atlantic Terminal was reconstructed in 2010, and the city significantly reduced parking requirements within the Special Downtown Brooklyn District in 2012 to better align with actual utilization rates. Willoughby Square, now known as Abolitionist Place, is a more than one-acre public open space under construction and targeting completion this year. And new developments are underway, including the 141 Willoughby Street Office Building and 80 Flatbush and 1 Willoughby Square, both of which will include a total of three new public schools. The Greater Central Business District, which also includes Dumbo and the Brooklyn Navy Yard, also saw significant changes between the 2000s and 2010s. The Dumbo rezoning put in place mixed-use zoning to facilitate the reuse of loft buildings and allow new contextual mixed-use development. And the world-class 1.3-mile Brooklyn Bridge Park was also opened. The Brooklyn Navy Yard also saw significant job growth during this time due to capital investments and innovative workforce training initiatives, specifically focusing on high-tech manufacturing and design. The Greater CBD is expected to continue to see even more changes in the coming years. The Navy Yard's Master Plan expansion was recently approved by the City Council, unlocking space for tens of thousands of new industrial jobs, and Pacific Park will continue construction of mixed-use developments and open space along Flatbush and Atlantic Avenues. As discussed, there has been numerous efforts made over the last two decades to stimulate development and encourage a mix of uses in the Greater Downtown Brooklyn CBD. This planning and investment has spurred unprecedented job and housing growth and has expanded not only the CBD's economy but that of the borough and the city. But we can do more. Several citywide initiatives continue to inform our thinking and have aided in planning for the area's continued equitable growth, with a focus on accessible jobs, affordable housing, healthy living, and more vibrant shopping corridors. Under the Adams Administration and coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, we are informed by an even greater attention to Brooklyn's equitable recovery to meet the change of a rapidly evolving economy, our affordable housing crisis, and a re-envisioned public realm. While the administration and the department take on the City of Yes citywide initiatives around climate change and resiliency, economic opportunity, and housing, place-based initiatives focusing on specific neighborhoods like downtown Brooklyn and Fort Greene remain at the forefront of planning as well. As outlined by the New York Panel and their subsequent report, Making New York Work for Everyone, Brooklyn's Greater CBD should play a critical role in supporting job growth and affordable housing production, with a particular focus on anchor institutions and city-owned sites, improving the public realm with a focus on safe, multimodal transportation, and ensuring that nearby communities, particularly NYCHA residents, can benefit from a growing CBD and these new opportunities. And I'll pass it over now to Amrita.
Thank you, Alex. Good afternoon, Commissioners. In the next few sections, I'll be sharing some background on existing conditions before getting into the second half of the presentation, which is focused on framework recommendations. The economic connections between downtown Brooklyn and the surrounding employment centers in the borough, city, and region are inherently related and have been a key consideration to inform our forward-looking planning goals. The downtown Brooklyn CBD is well-suited to support the growth of jobs and housing. The area is served by 13 subway lines, several bus lines, and the regional Long Island Railroad. On this slide, we have a travel shed map, which shows commute times into downtown Brooklyn. The number of people who can reach downtown Brooklyn in 45 minutes is comparable to those who can reach Times Square in 45 minutes. From a commute equity standpoint, every job added in downtown Brooklyn is better for a resident in East New York or Southern Brooklyn. The majority of downtown Brooklyn commuters utilize the subway, and 3/4 of area workers come from Brooklyn and other New York City neighborhoods, underscoring that the CBD largely serves a local workforce population. In this version of the travel shed map, we are looking at commute times from downtown Brooklyn. The hatched areas on the map represent the contextual downzoning of historic districts that surround the downtown Brooklyn Core area. The abundant transit options and easy access to neighboring job hubs makes it a very desirable neighborhood to live in. Downtown Brooklyn has contributed significantly to housing creation at the borough and city level, and particularly at the community district level. The area has helped relieve housing demand in nearby brownstone and historic neighborhoods with limited opportunities for new housing creation. The Greater CBD area has seen a rise in overall population as well, by approximately 51% over the last two decades. In the Greater CBD area, the composition of the population has changed. Significant increases are seen in Asian and white populations, and there has been a decline in the black population. There has also been an increase in the age groups 25 to 44. The area median income is nearly doubled out of the borough and nearly three times that of neighboring NYCHA communities. Zooming into the neighborhood tabulation area level, which primarily includes the downtown Brooklyn Core and Dumbo, the composition of the population changed. However, all race and ethnicity groups saw an increase in absolute numbers. This NTA is also one of the areas that experienced the highest amounts of net new construction between the years 2010 and 2020. In the Greater CBD area, the annual average of housing produced over a nearly 30-year span in the 70s leading up to the year 2000 was about 40 units a year, as seen in the graph to the left. This number has since increased to 400-plus units a year and subsequently to 1,500 units a year over the last two decades because of higher-density zoning and land use changes that were put in place to match the extensive transit access. There are roughly 17,000 apartments in the downtown Brooklyn Core area. Approximately 2,800 of them are income-restricted apartments. These units were created primarily through the voluntary inclusionary housing program, the R-10 program, as well as through city-led efforts on public sites. It's worth noting that the overall percentage of income-restricted housing is in the 15% to 16% range, which is lower than the minimum required under mandatory inclusionary housing. With newer mechanisms such as MIH, there is an opportunity to map MIH to facilitate a higher percentage of income-restricted homes to help address affordable housing needs in the neighborhood. Since the creation of the mandatory inclusionary housing program, 12 applications with MIH have been approved in Community District Two, as shown in orange in the map to the right. The three NYCHA communities, Farragut, Ingersoll, and Whitman Houses, include a total of 4,900 homes and make up one of the largest shares of income-restricted housing in the downtown Brooklyn Fort Greene area. Downtown Brooklyn is one of only a few really strong secondary job centers in the New York Metro region. The Greater CBD area accounts for a total of nearly 126,000 jobs. There are roughly 62,000 public-sector jobs that are either located in or headquartered in the Greater CBD area. The numerous civic services located in downtown Brooklyn that serve the borough as a whole are a defining characteristic of the CBD as Brooklyn's civic hub. There are roughly 64,000 private-sector jobs. Nearly a third of these private-sector jobs are in the healthcare and education field. The Greater CBD area represents a broad mix of businesses, small and large. Around 3/4 are microbusinesses employing fewer than 10 people. With regards to employment numbers, small, medium, and very large businesses represent a much greater share of employment. The largest businesses employ around 50% of total workers. These businesses represent a diverse mix of industries. The number of establishments is continuing to grow, and the area is beginning to form industry clusters focused largely around institutions and transportation hubs in the downtown core and in Dumbo. This chart shows private-sector wages across major sectors. The office-based sectors are shown in pink, institutional in blue, industrial in purple, and local services in the light orange. The size of the circle represents the number of jobs. The citywide median is shown in the dashed black line. Most sectors with median wages above the citywide median are predominantly in the office-based sectors. The institutional sector, which makes up a third of all private-sector jobs, has wages that fall just above or below the citywide median, and it employs the widest range of job types and occupations. Government jobs also represent a diverse array of occupations and income opportunities for workers with a variety of educational backgrounds. Prevalent public-sector jobs in the area include courts, local safety, government offices, public education, transit workers, and city services, including parks. There are approximately 250 occupations potentially available to public-sector workers. The median annual wages range anywhere from childcare workers at $27,000 a year to chief executives at $173,000 annually. The graph on this slide shows some of these occupations and associated educational requirements. The dashed black line again represents the New York City median. Those with higher-level degrees have more opportunities to earn above the median wage, but there's also considerable opportunity for those with less than a bachelor's degree to earn near or above the city median. Here is a closer look at some occupations. We've included some examples, such as employees in court facilities, office-based jobs, and transportation workers as well. There is a wide range of wage opportunities for different educational backgrounds. The Greater CBD area is the borough's largest office cluster. The area attracts a wide spectrum of businesses, from small nascent firms to larger, more established firms. The downtown Brooklyn Core is a thriving destination for retail and shopping as well. Fulton Mall has several small businesses and national brands and is a major retail corridor. The CBD has a burgeoning cultural district with 40-plus arts organizations that foster a whole range of artistic disciplines. Many healthcare institutions have been expanding their presence and services in the downtown Brooklyn Core and have been partnering in attracting Manhattan-based affiliates. There are some important city-run health facilities in the neighborhood as well that provide outpatient healthcare. These include the Fort Greene Health Clinic along Flatbush Avenue and the Gotham Health Cumberland Clinic at North Portland Avenue. Downtown Brooklyn is home to numerous higher educational institutions, ranging from universities to community colleges and vocational training schools. Many of these higher educational institutions have also been expanding their investment in the neighborhood, is at an all-time high. Some notable examples are included on this slide. This unique and dynamic mix of uses in the area results in a thriving daytime population. A combination of factors, including the vibrant mix of uses, clusters of economic activity, strong presence of housing institutions, paired with excellent transit access, and a predominantly local New York City-based workforce, has aided in the Greater CBD area's overall resiliency from the pandemic. There is continued interest in growth by anchor institutions in the area, which indicates that the neighborhood is poised to create a meaningful talent pipeline. LIU and Brooklyn Hospital are among these institutions that are considering long-term plans to expand and modernize their facilities. I'll now walk through some background about these two institutions and the existing conditions at these two sites. LIU was founded in downtown Brooklyn nearly 100 years ago, and Brooklyn Hospital has been around for almost 175 years, the oldest hospital in Brooklyn. Both institutions serve a diverse demographic. They also have a geographic reach beyond downtown Brooklyn. LIU serves nearly 18,000 students across New York City and Long Island and 9,000 in the downtown Brooklyn campus alone. Brooklyn Hospital serves nearly 1 million residents in North and Central Brooklyn. Together, the two sites are the equivalent of four city blocks and have multiple important frontages: Flatbush Avenue and University Place to the west, Willoughby Street to the north, Decalb Avenue to the south, and Fort Greene Park on the easternmost edge. Ashton Place is the main north-south corridor dividing the two campuses. LIU recently completed an as-of-right development project, including a new residential tower and a reconstructed athletic field and parking garage. This is a view along a Flatbush Avenue Extension and University Place, which is a city-owned open space bordering the LIU campus. This is a view along a Decalb Avenue and Hudson Avenue looking west. Both Decalb Avenue and Willoughby Street, which is on the northern end of the campus, are both important east-west streets. This is a view from the corner of Ashton Place and Decalb Avenue. The recently constructed building on the LIU block is seen in the background. Ashton Place connects further north to nearby NYCHA communities and the Brooklyn Navy Yard. This is an image of Brooklyn Hospital from Ashton Place. The Brooklyn Hospital site includes a number of buildings built over a period of several decades with more recent renovations to certain wings. And this is a view of St. Edward's Place looking south with the edge condition along Fort Greene Park. As seen here, there are some significant grading considerations along this interface with the park. The two institutions are in the early stages of developing their proposals and vision. At the LIU campus, in the near term, plans have been filed for an additional as-of-right project along the Decalb Avenue frontage. Additionally, there is an as-of-right development under construction at the northeast corner of the Brooklyn Hospital campus as well. Flatbush Avenue is a major thoroughfare along which transformative growth has been occurring. Along this stretch near the campuses, there is a pretty stark contrast between the west side of Flatbush Avenue and the east side. On the west side, we've seen a lot of growth in housing, job opportunities, and services. And on the east side, there is limited room for growth. These two sites, as mentioned earlier, together occupy four city blocks, which is a total of 15 acres. This is a scale where expansion plans could be transformative and impactful for the broader neighborhood. We feel that this calls for a coordinated approach for both campuses that accounts for their visions while also considering them in the context of the planning needs for the neighborhood more broadly. The build conditions here are also a product of the underlying zoning, which dates back to the 1960s. While the R6 zoning could allow for some incremental growth, which the institutions have been utilizing, it does not match the needs of the campuses today and for the future. The anticipated campus redevelopment plan provides the opportunity to see through the goal of aligning the zoning and land use to meet the needs of these local institutions while also better integrating these institutions with the rest of downtown Brooklyn. To that end, the department is presenting this framework, which outlines some early priorities for the area to help inform conversations around anticipated growth on the east side of Flatbush Avenue. The overarching objectives include supporting the growth of anchor institutions, continuing to strengthen the downtown Brooklyn CBD, and providing guidance for private development proposals as well as public investments, building on recovery efforts, and better connecting Brooklyn residents to jobs in the district. An important goal of the framework is to ensure that future development of anchor institutions supports the local community with housing, job readiness, and more. Over the past few months, we've presented to Community Board Two, elected officials, partner agencies, and other local stakeholders to seek their initial feedback. The framework recommendations are meant to be a work in progress and are intended to inform future outreach, advanced planning, and interagency coordination efforts. A reminder of the focus areas and scales that we'll be referencing in the remainder of the presentation: the Greater CBD area, which includes neighboring job hubs Dumbo and the Brooklyn Navy Yard, the downtown core, areas east of Flatbush Avenue, including the three NYCHA communities, and the two anchor institution sites, as well as the Ashton Place Navy Street corridor. As part of the framework, we have included both place-based and programmatic recommendations on a range of planning topics. The land use and urban design principles focus on the LIU and TBHC campuses and their immediate vicinity. The land use and urban design principles focus on the LIU and TVHC campuses and their immediate vicinity. But we're also considering the larger extent of the neighborhood when it comes to other topics, such as city-owned assets, public realm and transit needs, strengthening connections to NITIA communities, current and future infrastructure, public health, housing, and jobs. The first topic is land use and urban design. We are looking to support coordinated plans across the two sites, ensure that the redevelopment plans account for site-specific conditions and adjacencies, and facilitate strategies that improve overall connectivity with the surrounding community. It is important to consider how the two sites are situated within the context of the larger neighborhood. This map highlights some important east-west corridors in yellow, and north-south corridors are shown here in blue. We want to be mindful of the characteristics of each of these key streets, the role they play in the broader public realm network, and ensure that the planned developments are responsive to these frontages. Fort Green Park, on the easternmost edge, is a frontage that is of particular importance and needs to be thoughtfully planned. The photo on the left shows existing conditions and highlights this interface with the park along the Brooklyn Hospital property. We've also included some historic images of the park that show the lotline condition, which has always varied from other frontages of the park. We are coordinating closely with the Parks Department and partner agencies to plan for this prominent frontage. Here we have the typical sidewalk and streetscape experience that exists along other frontages of the park that consists of a stone masonry wall, street trees, and accessible sidewalks with the hex pavers. Some key guiding principles for site planning of the two campuses include improving connectivity with the surrounding streets, creating a clear hierarchy between public, private, and interstitial spaces, while also ensuring that site circulation is responsive to the anchor institution's day-to-day operations and circulation needs for students and staff, et cetera, linking Willoughby Street to Decalb Avenue through a new publicly accessible connection within the Brooklyn Hospital property along the park edge, enhancing east-west connectivity where feasible, this could be visual or physical connections, supporting the creation of new open space at optimal locations informed by proposed uses and building footprint needs for the institutional uses. The campuses share lotlines on the corner of Decalb Avenue and Ashland Place. Here, we believe it is important to maintain sufficient setbacks and clearances between the proposed developments. We also want to ensure that there are strong street walls that are created along key frontages, but also allow flexibility where appropriate. Encourage high-quality urban design while accounting for site planning and design considerations that need to be factored in when integrating institutional uses with other uses, facilitating a mix of uses within a building or across multiple buildings, considering best practices for floor plate sizes, floor to ceiling heights, et cetera, operational necessities such as mechanical or logistical aspects, and site circulation and open space as well. We also want to support a balanced mix of uses across the two institutions. There is an opportunity to encourage a more enhanced mix of uses closer to Flatbush Avenue to enliven this frontage and relate to this major corridor. Moving east, supporting the expansion of educational and healthcare space at the mid-block portions of the sites, along with housing and job space. And on the eastern edges of the Brooklyn Hospital campus, uses tailored to suit the park adjacency. Based on some market research and recent development trends in the neighborhood, we are exploring how to create opportunities for flexible and fit-out spaces for office, institutional, retail, and entertainment uses, incorporate retail in a variety of sizes, identify opportunities for community uses and flexible gathering spaces, space dedicated for children and young adults, which specifically brought up during our conversations with NITIA Resident Association leaders, facilitate the creation of housing, including income-restricted housing, and support institutional growth through the creation of step-out and/or other specialized spaces, such as learning spaces, incubators, and labs. Promote thoughtful urban design and massing strategies. This slide illustratively shows the principle of stepping up towards Flatbush Avenue, which is a major thoroughfare, and stepping down towards the Fort Green Park interface. Encouraging strategies such as setting back or chamfering corners of buildings to allow for views to the Fort Green Park monument along Willoughby Street. The design of ground floors should ensure vibrancy and activation at the street level with generous sidewalks that can allow space for circulation, street trees, and green infrastructure. And future developments should also consider how they relate to the surrounding context, with particular consideration given to how the bases of buildings interact with the public realm. The next topic is opportunities at city-owned properties. We are working to understand the long-term needs of city-owned facilities and identify opportunities on city sites to facilitate open space, affordable housing, and job space. The first example is University Place, which is a mapped park that adjoins the LIU campus. We are looking to work with parks in LIU to create a world-class gateway along the Flatbush Avenue corridor. Another city-owned property is the Fort Green Health Clinic, located along University Place and the LIU campus. We are working with DOHMH to better understand their needs at this important public facility that serves not just residents in the neighborhood, but also across the city, given its location in a transit-rich area. We are exploring opportunities for co-location within planned growth at anchor institutions, given that there is a natural synergy and there are programmatic connections between a health clinic, nursing and pharmacy educational programs, and the hospital use as well. We also want to support the clustering of the clinic with other nonprofit service providers, which we understand to be a successful healthcare planning model. Moving further north, we are working to better understand the existing conditions and needs at the Health and Cost Hospitals Gotham Health Site on Block 2088 between Park Avenue and Auburn Place, surrounded by neighboring NITIA Ingersoll and Whitman Houses. This block has multiple active and important city services, including a health clinic, school, a library, a family shelter, and supportive services. We are working with partner agencies on understanding their long-term needs and evaluating strategies to support the continuity of healthcare and neighborhood services at this critical city-owned block. The next topic is public realm and connectivity. We are exploring strategies to improve the streetscape experience and enhance connectivity and user safety. We would like to pay particular attention to this Ashland Place Navy Street corridor, which we referenced earlier. It connects important neighborhood assets from the cultural district in the south to the Brooklyn Navy Yard and Dumbo to the north. We are also looking to work with DOT and parks to build on ongoing city-led projects in the general vicinity of this corridor. One such project is the Ashland Bike Lane. DOT currently has plans for a protected bike lane along the Ashland Navy Corridor with planned implementation this year. Another important goal is to facilitate the creation of new open space to serve the existing community and new populations expected as a result of anticipated growth. We are evaluating new open space potential in underutilized areas and city-owned properties, considering precedents that use existing facilities, such as the DOE and parks jointly-operated playgrounds to serve the broader community during non-school hours, utilizing zoning incentives such as POPS, and also working with DOT to explore ways to maximize open space through the street network, via the DOT Plaza Program or the Open Street Program. Coordinating investments to enhance existing open spaces. Commodore Berry Park is an important public open space along the Ashland Navy Corridor, proximate to the NITIA communities. Parks currently has an ongoing multi-phase capital project. Some improvements are underway with future phases to follow. We are aiming to build upon these projects and support improvements in the adjacent area. Identifying and cataloging unmet needs and specific improvements that could be made to existing parks, particularly those in proximity to public housing communities. And we're also engaging in an advanced planning effort with parks to inform private redevelopment proposals and their associated environmental review and technical analyses that would be required. We are looking at how to prioritize investments to connect public spaces and community resources through a safe and vibrant street network, prioritizing pedestrian enhancements that address accessibility and the needs of users with varying ages and abilities, identifying opportunities for streetscape improvements, particularly in coordination with ongoing efforts by local organizations, such as the Downtown Brooklyn Partnership as part of their public realm toolkit, supporting public art and cultural programming efforts, and promoting opportunities to increase tree cover planting and green infrastructure. We also want to work with DOT to improve sidewalk infrastructure, particularly in areas with constrained widths, develop corridors to transit, and promote streetscape enhancements, particularly around transit nodes, and increase bike infrastructure throughout the neighborhood, and improve wayfinding and signage to create a more legible circulation network. It is also important to anticipate and plan for future growth and balance the needs of an increasing mix of uses and users. We want to identify ways to balance the vehicular and logistics needs of businesses and institutions and residences, while also prioritizing pedestrian and bike safety. Work with our partner agencies to address quality of life and sidewalk mobility issues, and work through our ongoing citywide efforts to increase zoning flexibility, to limit vacancies, and promote active streetscapes as well. DOT has put forth a pedestrian mobility plan, which is a citywide framework to guide the design of streets and sidewalks based on pedestrian volume. The downtown Brooklyn CBD has been identified as a priority investment area and as part of the citywide effort, and this plan will serve as a guide for our continued work in the area. A key goal for the framework is to identify physical and programmatic recommendations to better connect the NITIA communities with the Central Business District and advance ideas from recent planning efforts led by NITIA, such as the Connected Communities Guidebook and the Open Space Master Plan. We have had two introductory meetings with resident leaders at Farragut, Ingersoll, and Whitman Houses to solicit their early input on planning needs for the larger neighborhood. We've incorporated a lot of the programmatic ideas that have come up as part of these conversations. And a reoccurring theme was the importance of space for youth engagement and mental health support, including for primary school aged children and teens, as well as senior care. Here are some existing conditions near the NITIA communities. We are looking at pedestrian mobility needs, opportunities to enhance access to and from neighboring communities serving users, such as schools, health clinics, and parks. We are coordinating with partner agencies to better understand how we can add on to ongoing efforts and think of additional opportunities, for example, along the elevated portion of the BQE and street frontages adjacent to NITIA. This slide includes an active capital project led by DOT and DDC, which will improve the pedestrian safety along Park Avenue and Navy Street intersection. In addition, DCP is looking at opportunities for mid-block crossings along the NITIA campus superblocks. This image here is an example of an existing crossing that exists today, connecting Farragut Houses to PS 307. We're currently studying existing conditions, and this work will require further feasibility studies together with DOT. We are working closely with partner agencies to monitor and evaluate current and future neighborhood needs across a range of planning and infrastructure topics. We are working with the MTA to identify station enhancement projects for stations servicing the CBD, exploring opportunities to facilitate improvements through private sites via the zoning for accessibility tool. We're starting to see some interest in this new incentive, and we're excited to see that. We're looking to work with the MTA to monitor ridership of the LIRR scoot service with the recently opened Grand Central Madison service and support implementing the Atlantic Ticket Pilot, which connects the LIRR with local subways and buses as a permanent ticket option. We are keeping in mind and monitoring with our partner agencies current and future infrastructure needs for the neighborhood, such as schools, utilities, and sewer infrastructure as well. As part of the ongoing citywide efforts, as well as future efforts that may follow, we want to study potential land use changes for the special downtown Brooklyn district to support housing opportunities, update downtown Brooklyn's voluntary inclusionary housing program to increase its effectiveness at producing affordable housing, increase overall housing capacity, including by supporting policy reform efforts for the removal of the state's floor area cap of twelve FAR, and understand how the proposed yes, housing opportunity tax amendment will create new housing opportunities in the neighborhood. We are also studying city-owned sites, as mentioned previously, to explore redevelopment opportunities to facilitate affordable housing and address a range of affordable housing needs, work with HPD to strengthen and preserve existing affordable housing units, and exploring opportunities to deepen affordability levels through HPD programs for new construction and facilitating dorms or student housing for students, workers, and researchers in the growing institutional sector. Work with our partner agencies on ensuring a strong network of healthcare and social services in a transit-rich part of the borough that can be accessed by people, not only from local communities, but also from across the city. Support ongoing citywide initiatives with considerations for local planning priorities for sustainability, and help facilitate retrofitting the building stock, transitioning to a cleaner energy grid, and promoting sustainable transit-oriented development. We are aiming to work with partner agencies on developing additional planning tools and economic development initiatives to help ensure that residents have opportunities to develop skills and access the kind of jobs that are in the neighborhood, especially in growing fields such as the institutional sector. We began this work in the fall of last year. We've spent the last few months doing some research, data gathering, and developing these planning priorities. As mentioned earlier, we have also had initial conversations with our partner agencies and local stakeholders to seek early feedback. We hope that this framework will be used to support continued engagement on the needs of the broader neighborhood. With regards to next steps, we expect to work with LIU and TVHC on their work plans for the campus redevelopment proposal, coordinate with partner agencies to advance ideas related to the city-owned sites, and identify ways to implement short-term and long-term ideas, engage with stakeholders periodically as these recommendations are advanced, and also coordinate with the ongoing citywide tax amendments to identify and support local housing, economic development, and sustainability priorities. We also want to further study and explore opportunities related to neighborhood-specific land use changes for the special district. To the business district's ongoing success, the department aims to further enhance the role the neighborhood plays for this entire region. That concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Yes, let's do that.
Thank you.
So let me just start off by saying a very big congratulations and thank you to you, Emrita, and to Alex and the entire Brooklyn office for your efforts to present the best thinking for this area and planning for the future here. This is exactly what I think the department should be doing, when we're talking about a neighborhood before we're in a responsive posture and thinking about what we want to advance in the interest of the city. So thank you. This is great, great work. Let me just pose a few introductory questions, and I'm certain there will be questions from the commission. But for those who are less familiar with the work of the department, this, of course, does not include any of the present company here, but anybody who might be watching. What is the difference when you're thinking about a framework versus an actual rezoning? Can you lay out how somebody should perceive those two different concepts?
Sure. I can take a stab, and Alex, please jump in. So in terms of the framework, we typically kind of come up with frameworks even for neighborhood plans and rezonings. It's essentially our early-stage thinking for the area. With rezonings, we often have very detailed zoning recommendations and land use changes, whereas with frameworks, we also sort of broaden the scope to not just look at zoning and land use needs and development, but really thinking about other topics as well, infrastructure, public realm, and our continued work with our partner agencies. In terms of the timing, frameworks tend to be earlier in the process and are, again, something meant to inform future full-fledged sort of land use actions that may be undertaken, which normally happens through a full-fledged sort of rezoning or neighborhood plan. Alex, please.
Got it. Thank you. And you noted that there were four blocks worth of private institutional ownership, which may at some point in the future decide that they wish to advance their own proposals here. Can you give us a sense of the status of those private, to the extent you want to call them applications or private concepts at this moment in time?
Sure. LIU, I'll start with LIU, which is on the western side, closer to Flatbush Avenue. They've had some very early conversations with us about their long-term needs for the campus, but it is evolving, but there aren't any sort of set timelines or anything like that at this time. They are moving forward with As of Right plans, but simultaneously thinking about some long-term goals for the longer timeframe. Brooklyn Hospital, on the other hand, is a little bit further along in their thinking, but also, again, in the very early stages. They haven't fully sort of began our pre-cert process or anything like that. Very preliminary discussions. Um, very sort of preliminary discussions about what could happen at their site.
Okay. So let me just pose two substantive questions about those individual private owners and, um, and then I have just a, a bit, one last big picture question, then we'll go to the, the rest of the commission. Um, so Long Island University obviously, um, uh, has, as you just noted, it's done some of its own development on site. You've got the theater that's being reconstructed on the corner. Um, you have, um, uh, future developments that are anticipated on that site and some that may be, uh, down, down the line. Um, can you say a little bit more about the opportunities to think about connecting this campus to the broader neighborhood? Um, obviously, uh, you know, there's institutional prerogatives about making sure that you have public safety on campus, which we certainly appreciate, but also there's, I think, a broader desire to make sure that this campus feels like it is part of the neighborhood. Can you just talk a little bit about how to balance that or how one might balance those considerations?
Absolutely. Um, so one thing that we've started to do is look at, uh, precedence of urban campuses and other ways in which institutions have dealt with this concept of, uh, improving connectivity, but also bi- balancing, um, that sort of boundary between public versus private. Um, we've seen instances where there are portions that are made public, for example, street frontages, making sure that there's active ground floors and that interface between the building and some of the more public facing areas versus some areas that are kept more private for certain reasons, safety, security, et cetera. Uh, so really depending on the individual needs and the building program, um, once these institutions go forward, we'll be able to have that conversation about, uh, striking that balance between public and private. Uh, but again, we're really referring to, um, other urban campuses that have done this and going from there.
Okay. Thank you. And on Brooklyn Hospital, uh, right next to the park, um, obviously there will be lots of concerns, except there's a live proposal here about how to make sure that the park itself is protected. And you were talking about the, um, you know, the strange configuration of one boundary of, of the park and the, and the Bristol, the Brooklyn Hospital Center. Let's talk a little bit about, uh, the, the, the prerogatives to, um, you know, in design as to how one might protect the park in the context of future development on the, the Brooklyn Hospital Center site.
Sure. Um, so in terms of, uh, building placement, there's different ways to do it. I think one way that we always try to think about these, uh, sensitive interfaces is to try to set back to the extent possible, which is also why we were proposing that publicly accessible connection to really make that frontage feel like the other frontages of the park. Um, a street like presence with sidewalks and public access is one way to kind of help open it up and also ensure that it still continues to feel like a public park. There's also ways in which, uh, the massing, uh, we had spoken a little bit about how to kind of step down to the park. Um, there's ways in which the bases of buildings can be shaped and, um, really sort of thoughtful design and architecture can really, uh, help address how buildings are perceived from the pedestrian experience. So those are two examples of how we would typically approach it.
Great. And then the last question from me, and then I will, we'll go to the rest of the commission here, is, uh, in terms of next steps and the opportunities for more public engagement here, obviously we have done some, this is a framework, not a rezoning, uh, what, what would you see as the next steps as ways for people to weigh in and think about the future of this neighborhood?
Sure. Um, I think at this juncture, uh, the CPC meeting milestone and presentation is our sort of main milestone and after this, we hope to kind of reconvene with our team and, uh, discuss, uh, ways in which we can advance, um, ideas from this framework and pieces of it and have an open, uh, line of communication with the community board and other stakeholders as well as we kind of pick up the pieces of this work, um, and move forward with it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cerrulo.
Thank you so much, um, for all the work that went into this and the thoughtfulness. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not really a, a question, but more of insight into the community engagement piece just, and you may know this already, but, um, I think of time is so weird, but I think a couple of years ago, um, um, there was, uh, actually huge, but it was all on Zoom, um, convening like three hundred NYCHA residents. Liz Hamby, who's now, um, with DCP, um, was there then for DOHMH, but with the mayor's action plan, um, so with Mach J MAP, the Center for Court Innovation, um, all working with, um, residents to, NYCHA residents to come up with plans called Neighborhood Stat and also plans to develop connected communities and what NYCHA residents, led by NYCHA residents, would like to see, um, as action plans, actual action plans for physical changes in their communities that will connect them to the rest of the community. I know that we need to call them NYCHA communities, but even that language separates NYCHA from being part of a community, but that's a conversation for another day. Um, so I would really recommend, so Ingersoll and Walt Whitman were involved in this process and have those plans that they are activating outside of or inclusive of the elected tenant leadership, but more expansive than just the elected tenant leadership. So in as much as there are things to build on, so not having to start from scratch and also, um, recognizing that work has already been done, it might be helpful to reach out. I'm happy to make those, Liz knows, um, but happy to, um, I led those conversations. So happy to make those connections.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And the other thing, uh, another, as if you need more stuff to look at, um, but I can tell you that in 2021 in Chicago, um, there was a really interesting development or that was built that had been in the works for many years, uh, and a partnership with, um, what there is called the Housing Commissioner, um, and a nonprofit organization called the Resurrection Project that built in Pilsen, which is a community that's in downtown Chicago, dorm-like developments because that neighborhood, um, is adjacent to a similar kind of LIU. So, and so that may be an interesting thing to look at because it has been done in other cities, um, before. Um, and I had one question, which was the, the data on, um, the increase in population over the last some odd years. Of course, it comes, it's no surprise to anyone that the largest spike is in, um, white population. Is there data on who has moved out?
Not at this time. We're happy to kind of take that question back to our population division to see if we can, uh, figure that out, but, uh, that's not, that's not the level of detail we were able to get into.
Thank you.
But thank you so much for the other suggestions as well. We will absolutely look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cerullo followed by Vice Chair Knuckles followed by Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you for the presentation and congratulations on an amazing, um, sort of framework. Um, and I appreciate the Chair's question and the distinction between framework and, and rezoning. Um, let, let me ask you this. It's really more of a, sort of a procedural question that links to sort of the opportunities for success on the substance of this, which being the world that we're in, you know, often is the, the enemy of, of, of progress. And the fact that this involves the private sector, the public sector, the not-for-profit sector, that there are multiple agencies involved, nothing is actually required, at least not at this point in, in the presentation. How do we view in the next steps, how to achieve the best success? Not to say everything should happen, not to say there isn't more debate, there isn't devil in the details and all of those things that we know, but how do we achieve the best opportunity for success in a, in a concept of a framework as we look ahead and, and as work continues on? Because there are so many parties to this. Who ends up owning it all? And how do we foresee getting something done as opposed to this becoming another wonderful report that gets done here? But yet it takes decades, if at all, for picking one or two things out of it that might happen.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question and that's something we're actively kind of grappling with and trying to address ourselves. Um, but I think at this point in time, we do see this sort of playing out as a combination of, uh, things. There's private proposals that could move forward. There could be, uh, city projects that we undertake based on how our conversations go with our partner agencies and of course, um, having this public forum to have a conversation about how it all fits together is one way to ensure that it is all part of this cohesive story and this broader, more comprehensive look. Uh, that's kind of where we are in the process right now, but hope to have better answers once, uh, we kind of advance specific conversations about these recommendations.
I understand and I could see certain, certain pieces of this could have a life of their own, um, particularly on the public realm side. I mean, that's the most obvious, um, because different partners can function in that. I, I say that, um, uh, understanding the role that organizations can play in improving the public realm. Do you foresee if, if at all, any suggestion or recommendation about funding coming into play in this? Or I know that's not typically a role we play or get involved in here, but do you see that as being an important part of sort of enhancing some of these ideas where those partnerships would be clearer, um, and then engage people in those discussions?
Absolutely. And I think that's where our focus on ongoing efforts also comes in. We're trying to really piece together what's already happening and how we can make a case for kind of enhancing what's already going on. In terms of specific answers to funding, uh, that is not something we're able to answer at this stage, but, um...
Sure.
...to Alex.
Sure. And, and we do see this as kind of like, um, uh, a pantry of different ideas, right? And we started off this, this whole process that, um, putting all the different pieces that different agencies are working on, that nonprofit sector's working on, um, there was no location that it was all put together in one place. And so we, we also see it as kind of like an advocacy document. Um, with it all there, you know, each individual project, whether it gets funded or not is, is one question, but when you see them all knit together as kind of a kit of parts, it, it does kind of beg the question about what you're saying, right? That maybe there should be, um, different investments that play off each other or there's, there's more bang for your buck when you do different combinations of the, of this toolkit. And so we did want to put it all together so that it could become an advocacy document both for the city and different agencies, but also for, uh, nonprofit world and, and local institutions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just wondering, do you know approximately, uh, the number of jobs that, um, these two institutions, um, produce, I mean, as we speak?
Not at this time because their exact sort of program mix is not, uh, fleshed out yet, so it's unclear to us. We do know that they have plans to expand academic and healthcare uses, which in and of itself will add jobs, but there also is thinking about adding additional non-residents who uses, uh, we don't have specific numbers at this time.
Are they, is it safe to assume that they are two of the larger employers in, uh, downtown Brooklyn?
They are, um, the, yes, some of the major anchors, but there are also larger sort of government agencies that are headquartered here that may have numbers that skew higher, uh, but they are two important employers in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. And, um, among the several NYCHA complexes, uh, I guess there were several thousand units of housing there?
That's right. Four thousand nine hundred, I believe.
How many? I'm sorry.
Forty-nine hundred, I believe.
Forty-nine hundred, okay. Uh, do you know whether or not there's any, um, outreach around employment opportunities between those institutions and, and, and NYCHA residents as we speak?
Uh, we do know that the Brooklyn Navy Yard has undertaken a lot of outreach as part of their planning efforts for, um, the, um, Navy Yard jobs, but aside from that, we, um, are aware of certain, uh, workforce affairs, uh, affairs that, uh, SBS has also held, um, but outside of that, um, not sure.
And I'll, I'll add to that. The, um, I think there's a lot of success that the Brooklyn Navy Yard has had with their workforce training program, um, again, because of what Emrita's saying about their outreach and engagement. Um, I think as part of these next steps, um, LIU and Brooklyn Hospital has engagement work as part of, uh, their ongoing programs, but, um, as part of what we've put together today, we think it's imperative that moving forward, um, you know, the whole premise of this is that, uh, there's been significant job growth over the last two decades.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure that is shared by all. And so to the point of like these as being major anchor institutions, um, it's great that they're growing, but they should also bring everybody along with them in, in that growth. And so that's something that we'll be thinking through with these anchor institutions, whether they move forward as, as private applications or as, if we move forward as a city and, and other kind of, um, roles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And for the work you've, you've obviously put in so far and the work you will continue to put in, but I'm curious, Ashland Avenue has always been a dividing line, um, as has the BQE and the communities have not transcended that. Many years ago, when we attempted to put kids into a school by Ingersoll, by Farragut, parents were app, even though that school was underutilized and was only forty-two percent or so utilized, parents absolutely refused to allow their kids to cross Ashland and to cross the BQE. That, so I'm not sure why you've put downtown Brooklyn slash Fort Greene, because I don't think this plan is about Fort Greene. It's about downtown Brooklyn and the Navy Yard. Um, I don't even think it's about Vinegar Hill or Dumbo, which has the same problems because Dumbo wants to be a part of Brooklyn Heights when it comes to things like education and shopping and, um, so I think you should be more mindful of where the boundaries of this should really be and what it is for, uh, because I think that the Fort Greene community would be very unhappy and certainly would not see much benefit in the plan and thinking for that part of the community. That being said, if you wanted to include them, I think you should include all government-assisted housing because there's a large amount of former Mitchell Lama, of Mitchell Lama, uh, the old two thirty-five program, uh, uh, what's her name? Kathy Wild's housing. There's, there's a lot of housing for middle and lower middle-class people that is not NYCHA that is important to both the area and to the city. And I think that should, if we're gonna call it a Fort Greene plan, I think we should put that in. That being said, I also think we should include the other institutions because it seems, and maybe it's because two institutions have reached out about their future, but you have NYU School of Engineering, which is certainly in this downtown area. You have St. Francis, even though it's future is uncertain, which is right in the middle of downtown. You do have Cumberland, the old Cumberland Hospital and the Cumberland Sniff, which is still there. Um, you have part of the Pratt campus, um, you have the Community College, and I'm sure that if we're looking at creating this vibrant educational institutional place, I think we should be including them, even if they may not be thinking right now about what they will be needing in the future, I think. If this is gonna be that kind of district, we need to include them as well as this seems to be going all the way up to BAM and to the theaters that have developed there. But I know it's early days, but you probably, you've talked about the kind of cultural district and what's gonna happen there, um, along with the Barclay Center and the larger Atlantic Yards project. And I think if you're going to include it, you really need to include more about how that is going to be helped or harmed by these plans.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. We'll absolutely look into that.
Um, I also was curious, you said there were twelve projects, MIH projects that had been mapped. Have any of them been built?
Yes, there's, I don't have the exact number, but um there's a couple that I can think of that have been built. Uh, on Vanderbilt Avenue, four seventy Vanderbilt is fully complete, is an MIH project. There's also uh one on South Portland Street, uh which was also an MIH application. Those are some examples.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm curious about that just because we haven't seen a lot of the construction, particularly since four twenty-one A is gone. We're not really aware of whether the program is working or not working. Um, and one of the other things you talked about, and then I'll stop, is uh relocating parking under the BQE. Dangerous issue. I just.
Understood.
I mean, NYCHA residents and particularly those at Whitman use that parking, and it is their primary source of parking. So if you're looking at that with DOT as eliminating that, which DOT periodically tries to do that all the way up through Williamsburg, and each time it gets pushed back. So I would caution against a plan that involved doing that.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll just, I'll just add on that, the MIH discussion. Um, most of the, almost all of the MIH sites that have been mapped are outside of the downtown Brooklyn Core because it's, it's a cap to twelve FAR.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of them were uh city-sponsored or a hundred percent affordable, nonprofit affordable housing. But I would say of the, of the private sites, um in all of Brooklyn, this is one of those areas where MIH pre-four twenty-one A issues, this is where it makes a lot of sense to, to leverage the, the private sector to build the mixed income housing. Um, you know, Emretha mentioned we are limited in the downtown Brooklyn Core by the twelve FAR cap, but um it also is the old R-ten VIH, so it doesn't even have the existing twenty percent VIH program there.
Right.
So um there's, there's a lot of tools available to us that we should be looking at as part of this, both in the Core as well as in the, the surrounding uh neighborhoods.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let me go next to Commissioner Osorio, followed by Commissioner Crowell, followed by Commissioner Buzzard.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and for the work. I join my colleagues in saying that this is really, really, really strong.
Thank you.
And I feel that in addition to providing an opportunity to expanding or engaging everyone in the planning process soon enough, this is also a really good example of what comprehensive planning could look like. So I'm also very excited about that second point. I think that in, in just uh hearing the presentation, I had similar questions to Commissioner Carmani and Benjamin in terms of, do we know what had been the impacts of previous rezonings on gentrification and displacement specifically by race? Like, like what do we know about it? I mean, we won't know whether the re, what the re, whether the rezonings and the displacement uh eh eh, or we, we, we would need to know how they were connected, but at least I think we need more information to understand how have the areas changed in this regard and how can we anticipate what we want to prevent? In addition to that, um I, I just, I was also in looking at the plans that you, you connected. I was um, I was thinking that this could be a really exciting opportunity to demonstrate what the comprehensive affordable plan, HPD's uh comprehensive affordable plan could actually look like. And I want to acknowledge Commissioner, Commissioner Buzzard's uh work in this. Uh, just to, as Commissioner Benjamin, Benjamin was saying, sort of like, how do we activate the public sector here? But what are the, how do we expand all of the other assisted living and subsidized housing programs in the area? So that's just a, a quick comment. Now moving into sort of like the, the specific uh framework, uh or components of the framework, I, I, I also think it would be really interesting to anticipate affordable housing needs of specifically uh the eh eh home care workers and uh other eh members of that particular uh section of the workforce who are deeply impacted by the lack of affordable housing in the place or near where they, where they work. And so that's, that's something that I wanted to just throw out there. The Collective for Community Culture and the Environment, but also eleven ninety-nine and many others have been really doing a lot of research on this. And I encourage you to think whether that can connect. Largely, my other sort of like uh big area of inquiry has to do with the type of employment, largely speaking, that you're considering. I didn't see in the presentation green jobs, industrial manufacturing as much as I was expecting, given what has already been said in terms of the important delicate connection between what happens here with what happens in and around the Navy Yard and along fl, eh flushing. So, you know, based on the CLCPA mandate, NYSERDA in twenty twenty-two already projected over a hundred and sixty-five thousand jobs statewide, of course. Um, and so the city alone, of yes alone, will potentially create many of those jobs. But, but how are we sort of in, in this comprehensive planning exercise, planning for those jobs to actually land in this, in this area? So, so that's, that's kind of like one question. And the other question has to do with, with the, so, so the, 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 that previous point is specifically connected to the type of um opportunities to work with anchor institutions like these two to actually create the spaces for prototyping, researching, uh eh eh essentially incubating the companies that are gonna be required to provide these goods and services into the future. But then, but then just to wrap up, really, what is the plan for industrial retention? You know, given the fact that this is an SMIA, given the fact that, you know, within a half a mile, you have, you still have considerable M-three ones, eh M-one twos. Um, and, and, and really, you know, how, how are we going to protect and attract additional industrial activity here? Um, because otherwise, they may be in jeopardy. And so, so I, those are just some ideas for, to engage in the conversation. Again, excited about the framework, just uh wondering if, if you can respond a little bit to some of them.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Um, I'll start with the last one. Uh, we did work very closely with the Brooklyn Navy Yard on the development of their master plan as part of the previous administration, their special district. Um, again, high-tech manufacturing and a lot of uh focus on uh green jobs there as well. Um, but uh to your point about what can happen at these campuses and in the Core, that is something we're very interested in exploring across collaboration, across the greater CBD area. Uh, so absolutely something that we can look into more closely. Um, and Alex, was there anything else to?
I, I'll just say uh on, on the industrial jobs, uh you know, the Navy Yard is mission-driven and, and has capital funding for, for a lot of their work. So we would look for opportunities to, to identify um businesses that maybe would be better suited outside of the yard, but there's like a relationship to that. You know, we've, we've really um focused heavily, we didn't talk about it much in the presentation, but the Brooklyn Tech Triangle, there's a relationship, right, between downtown Brooklyn, the Navy Yard and Dumbo. Um, and that's, that's one of the things that we want to kind of bring out of this. And so these institutions, it's, it's, um, it's a really good kind of direction for us to move in, to think through how we can kind of connect those two.
Thank you for that clarification. I, I really appreciate that. And, and, and you know, in my mind, I think that it sounds like we agree that this could be a strong opportunity to clarify what is the city policy on industrial retention? What is our position on the future of the industrial business incentive areas, you know, program? Uh, and that's citywide, sorry, neighborhood-wide, district-wide study that, that we have been talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on housing, did you want to?
On housing, I just, I did want to also remind that um we included this in the presentation, but um actually taking a closer look at the neighborhood tabulation area level, which is the downtown Brooklyn Core, the area that was rezoned, um absolute numbers of all race and ethnicity groups increased. There were no losses, so just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, uh, the, the losses that we had generally seen are driven by losses in the black population in Fort Greene, Clinton Hill and Brooklyn Heights. Um, downtown Brooklyn was where the black population increased.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Crowell, followed by Commissioner Buzzard and Commissioner Marine.
Thanks very much, and I just want to thank you both for, and the whole team, for a staggering amount of work. As someone who's lived in and around that area for twenty-six years, I uh appreciate the amount of work it took to try and put some cohesion to a very, very complex area, very diverse area, and an area that is very separated by some extraordinarily uh major corridors in the area. Um, I have a couple of questions. I think uh Commissioner Benjamin asked a number of them. But um in choosing sort of the frame of uh eds and meds, um I'd like a little more perspective on where you hope it all comes out. Um, I'm, I'm struggling just a little bit. Um, when I hear eds and meds and coming from higher education myself, um, I equate it with a vision for something far greater than it is today and an integration of what's going on in um the colleges and, and the educational settings with the medical sector. Um, I'm hoping that's, that's more of what we'll see. I think it's, um, it's a, an odd, if not complicated, mix of what's there now in terms of the, the, the providers of care. But there's some very significant opportunities to integrate education with um experiential uh training um with uh, with urban healthcare. Um, that's, that's my first question on some of the thoughts. And also where the through line would be in terms of that. Um, some of my other questions um certainly have to do with uh what appears to be a very heavy emphasis on NYCHA, but I'm not entirely sure um how it all connects in terms of advancing the interests uh of NYCHA longer term and the integration of opportunities for employment for NYCHA residents as well as sort of for that better standard of care that might be around there with meds, meds and eds and the educational opportunities. So if you could comment on that, and I'll have a lot more questions as we move forward. But those are the two things that, aside from what Commissioner Benjamin raised are on my mind.
Absolutely, and thank you for those questions, uh Commissioner. Um, and I think uh that is something we're actively trying to do, which is better uh understand what is going on separately in the eds and med sectors and how to kind of bring it all together. We see a lot of natural synergies, uh especially with these two campuses. Um, it is very sort of serendipitous that they're located right across from each other. They're thinking about long-term plans around the same time. So there's a lot of opportunity here just with these two sites. And then adding to the mix, um other institutions in the area to Commissioner Buzzard, um, sorry, Commissioner Benjamin's point. Um, we do see a lot of potential here, which we hope to unpack uh through our continued work in the area. And with regards to the focus on NYCHA, uh this really is about that geography east of Flatbush Avenue. Um, it is a very fundamental sort of guiding principle for us to kind of uh advance any recommendation, whether it's programmatic uh about connections to jobs or public realm improvements. Uh, we are kind of prioritizing that area east of Flatbush Avenue. Um, Alex, anything to add there?
Yeah, also on the eds and meds, I mean, um we've, by all the reports we've seen, we've always been looking to grow uh the non-residential sector in downtown Brooklyn.
Yep.
Um, and the lessons learned here are that education and healthcare is what's really kind of come to the forefront in terms of job growth uh and, and business growth. I think, what was it, out of the sixty-four thousand private sector jobs, a third were education and healthcare. Um, and so uh we wanted to think through, well, if that's the growing sectors, we're not gonna try and steer to sectors that aren't growing. Let's focus on those and think, think through that. Um, you know, the institutions themselves, they, they, there is a cross-pollination. For LIU, for example, uh has a huge focus on um nursing, healthcare. Uh, they're growing a lot of their, their, their uh, the kind of the pharmaceutical tech as well. Um, it seems like a natural connection to the Department of Health Building directly across the street to uh Cumberland, uh the health clinics there. Um, and so again, it was, it was really about thinking through, putting it all on the paper, the programmatic discussions. And then where we can have like the direct impact is on the, the public realm and the physical space. Um, and again, to Commissioner Benjamin's point, it is in some locations physically impossible to cross east-west on like Ashland. Um, there's like one sky bridge and it's ringed by fences, there's no sidewalks. Um, and so, you know.
I am well aware. I've, I've walked it, uh, you know, at my, at great risk.
Right, exactly. So uh, you know, part of it is also, we want to think through the physical connect, connectivity. Um, you know, DOT is doing incredible work along Ashland. And so we're saying, how can we, we push it even further and make sure that we're focusing not on just people moving through the neighborhood, but with a specific focus on residents that live there and how they can take part physically in that growth as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Buzzard?
Well, that leads into what, the point I wanted to push on, which is also, I mean, just echoing everyone's comments, I think this is amazing. I love the framework approach to where we are in this phase of time um and hope it does turn into plans. Um, and really hope you all continue to push. If this is an advocacy piece on these physical connectivity issues, to me, that seems like one of the major barriers and, and opportunities here, but that these institutions are, as much as they are um adding to the economy, are serving as barriers right now to some of the interconnectivity that um uh we know from a urban planning or urban design perspective is needed. Um, and then the second thing I wanted to say is just around as, as plans do advance, um while these are, are sometimes seen by the city and by the department as separate things, to not lose sight of coordination with NYCHA's capital repair plans for these campuses. Um, because that often, uh sometimes when we're in communities, uh we say like, oh, well, that's a different plan. But of course, that's one of the most prominent issues for so many residents. And seeing where there's opportunities for um these institutions contributing to the planning process there as well, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's really great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Emretha and the team. Uh, very good presentation. I appreciate it. I'm always, I've always grappled with voluntary inclusionary housing and mandatory. Um, and so I'm gonna ask a bunch of questions to try and ascertain how many units have been built on the voluntary inclusionary housing in this area? And how many units have been built on the mandatory inclusionary housing? And then I also find that the twelve-story limitation seems to be an obstacle for imposing MIH. What would it take to change that to allow for MIH to exist in taller buildings? Because what, you know, the, the comments that this body has had is that, I've heard two things. One is that most of the development downtown is being housed. Most of the people that are housed are white, the white population. But I'm also hearing that from you guys, that there has been a large move of black population in. And it, it's, it's a, it's a mix. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to segregate it black and white. It's everyone together. It seems like it's more heavily populated by one ethnic group than it is another. And the MIH program is intended to try and mix that. So I'm, I'm, and you know, HPD takes the voluntary inclusionary funds to build more mandatory, more housing. Some of it takes the form of mandatory inclusionary housing. So we're really not meeting the goal of the voluntary inclusion housing, inclusionary housing program if those funds are going to build mandatory inclusionary housing units. So there seems to be a disconnect between the two programs and the goals. And specifically since if I go to a manufacturing district and I'm asking for an upzoning, if I go sixty stories, I still have to put in mandatory inclusionary housing. So there's a, there's just a juxtaposition of thoughts here. Um, but the plan is a good one. I really would encourage us to take a look at the um mandatory inclusionary and voluntary inclusionary and make changes to it to allow it to exist in taller buildings. That's the only comment that I have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And um I would just note that um currently there are roughly twenty-eight hundred uh income restricted units that exist in the neighborhood, uh largely through voluntary inclusionary programs. I don't have the number for the uh MIH units that have been built. Um, but there's also more that are currently in the pipeline, so this number is set to increase. Um, there are active conversations about improving the effectiveness of VIH and MIH that are happening as part of our city of yes housing opportunity text as well. Uh, so through those efforts, we will be talking about um what could happen here.
Well, it'd be interesting to find out from HPD how, where, where is it that they're injecting the funds? Because that would really tell the truth. Is it going to, is it going to their existing pipeline of mandatory inclusionary, of, of housing they have planned that is automatically mandatory inclusionary because it's affordable housing? And the mandatory inclusionary and the volunteer? Because it doesn't, again, it doesn't seem like we're producing, you're telling me it's twenty-eight hundred units. How does that compare to the number of market rate units? And it doesn't sound like there's a, 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 not even a ten percent mix there. So let's, I, I'd like to understand those numbers better.
Absolutely.
To be able to better render a decision.
Absolutely. It's currently around sixteen percent affordability across the Core. Um, but yeah, we can follow up with you and uh discuss this further.
Yeah, the numbers will be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just clarify, you're, you're absolut, you're right on the, the racial breakdown. It is uh primarily white and Asian population increase. We're identifying that in absolute numbers, the black population had increased. So it is still predominantly white and A, and Asian neighborhood growth. Um, you know, I think uh what, what's the total population now in the, in the?
In the Core.
Yeah, dear, it's okay.
Fifty-nine thousand, I think.
Yeah, so fifty-nine, yeah.
I think so.
So, yeah, but, but basically, it, it went from, from close to, I think, two thousand or three thousand residents to sixty thousand. Um, and so that is what allowed for the kind of growth across all uh racial, racial groups.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, thank you both very much and to the entire team. Uh, we really appreciate all the effort that went into this. Okay, let's, let's do it. Let's give them another round. And we know there's much more to come and uh we'll look forward to uh, to work with you on an ongoing basis on this. So congratulations. Okay, Ryan, let's go on into our pre-hearing reviews.
Sure, uh so the first item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit, uh city map amendment and a post-referral review of authorizations and CPC certification in Staten Island Community District Three. Uh, presenting for the first time to the commission is Kari Bailey.
All right, Kari, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Geradnick. Um, my name is Kari Bailey, and this is a private application by Veterans Real. Um, my name is Kari Bailey and this is a private application by Veterans Realty Court and they're requesting a city map amendment to add an unopened record street to the city map, a special permit for certain retail establishments in an M district and three South Richmond development authorizations, um, for modification of topography, group parking facility regulations and to waive cross-access connections. And these actions would facilitate a forty-seven thousand square feet foot, um, commercial development located on Veterans Road West in the Charleston Community District Three in Staten Island. The Charleston neighborhood is on Staten Island's western shore near the Outer Bridge Crossing, which is bounded by State Highway Route Forty-four, which goes over that bridge and is known as the West Shore Expressway. There are several other buildings in the area that were facilitated by prior commissioner, commission approvals. One of them is the Tides of Charleston. It's a senior housing community in an R-three dash two district, which you can see in the left, it's labeled in the yellow text. Another one is the Bricktown Center at Charleston. It's labeled in a peach color. Uh, it's a regional retail center with big box stores in a M-one dash one and C-dash-four-one district. And additionally, to the right of a development site, which is labeled in red, um, there's a supermarket and a library nearby. Veterans Road West is a service road for the West Shore Expressway, which comes from the north and turns west here and then terminates at an intersection with Arthur Kill Road, which is the primary arterial street through Charleston. Land uses in the area include local and regional retail, at least one restaurant, there's office space, wholesale building supply, self-storage, an animal adoption center, there's auto service and an MTA soft depot. The project consists of roughly a hundred square feet development site, which is located and placed alongside Warner Street and unimproved Record Street, running four hundred and forty feet north from its intersection with Veterans Road West and it terminates at Fairview Park. You can see here that there's other record street spurs like Warner Street on this map, but they're not part of this private application. The site itself is in M-one dash one district and it's currently used for vehicle storage and open storage of construction equipment, which is use group sixteen. This site has a hundred and seventy-four feet of frontage on Veterans Road West and the picture of the left is a view of the site facing northeast of Veterans Road. And the site does not have really any trees, but you can see that there's parkland in the background. And the picture to the right is a view of Veterans Road facing east. And this is a view of Warner Street currently in unbuilt, unmapped Record Street and thirty-five feet, it's to be improved by this project. The site is located to the left now, so the north is to your left and Veterans Road West is to your right. Requested actions would facilitate development of two commercial buildings totaling forty-seven hundred square feet, a floor area with an FAR of point four-nine and a hundred and sixty-seven accessory parking spaces. The proposed building, A, is two stories with thirty-two hundred square feet of retail, over a hundred and, over fifteen thousand square feet of office space, space above. And there would be fifty-six parking spaces in the cellar. Building B, which is a small retail pad you can see to the lower right, it includes a drive-through window and a queuing area for a minimum of eight cars. And this is likely to be developed as a bank or a restaurant. The applicant proposes a primary access curb cut on Veterans Road West to the right of the site. The building entrances are set back, which encourages people to drive through into the site before maneuvering the car into a parking space to avoid congestion. A second curb cut is proposed on the opposite side of the open parking lot to allow for a separate egress for vehicles, which provides continuous circulation and a wider thirty-foot wide drive aisle. The applicant also proposes to construct a thirty-foot wide roadway within the bed of Warner Street, as well as a five-foot sidewalk and a third curb cut would then be at the terminus of Warner Street on the left side of this diagram to access the cellar parking for building A. Regarding transit, there are two local bus routes using Veteran Roads West and both routes start at the ferry terminal and end near the Bricktown Retail Center. The applicant requests a special permit to allow department store uses in use group ten A and food stores without size limitation in a manufacturing district. This would facilitate a wide variety of retail, including use group six or ten A on the first floor of building A, which again is to the left. For this special permit, the commission must meet the findings summarized here, which would widely apply to the open parking and would be utilized by any department stores. The findings should be that the primary access is not from a narrow street and that the proposed site plan does not draw traffic into local streets. The applicant proposes a primary curb cut on the eighty-foot wide Veterans Road West, which is near highway access ramps. The commission must also find that there is adequate reservoir space at the vehicle entrance and that there's a sufficient vehicle ingress, egress is provided to provide congestion. The building layout avoids congestion at this entrance and provides a wide and relatively straight drive aisle to the separate curb cut on the opposite side of the parking lot, which is at least four hundred feet away. Um, I already discussed the two nearby bus, bus routes, um, but regarding the last findings about use compatibility and character of the area, the proposed retail and office use are similar to the supermarket and big box retail that are east of this site. It, it could also provide more services closer to the residents living in the Tides of Charleston. The next action is an amendment to the city map to officially give Warner Street a final map status. So they were at this street. It's already city-owned and proposed curb cuts on it would help meet the findings from other requested actions. The applicant also requests three commission authorizations that are specific to zoning on Staten Island. In the special South Richmond district, authorizations are required for over thirty parking spaces to ensure that the location, the location of such car access and egress permits, better site planning and traffic in residential streets is minimized. So this authorization is needed for modification of topography if more than two feet of cut or fill of the natural grade is proposed. The application, the applicant requests these actions to allow the hundred and sixty-seven total parking spaces and up to nine feet, feet of fill, which is towards the middle of the site, as well, as well as to four feet of cut for the loading berths that are in the rear. The existing grade slopes up toward the rear, which you can see from the section at the top of the screen. Parking lot is proposed to be added underneath in order to create a gradual slope instead of a sloppy choke, slope for safety. The applicant also requests an authorization for a waiver of cross-access connection because cross-access is required between any commercial or community facility used in Staten Island manufacturing and some commercial districts in order to help reduce congestion on streets so that shoppers driving from one store to another on an adjacent site need not to enter the street. As you can see from the top of the site plan, in very light gray, it's lighter than the proposed buildings. Um, there's existing buildings on adjacent lots that would make cross-access along with development infeasible. So separate from the CPC review, um, additional chair certification is requested to waive access, particularly to the north of the site where the natural terrain slopes up, it would make any future potential connection too steep. So the Staten Island Community Board Three voted in March of twenty-twenty-three to approve this application with a vote of twenty-five in favor, non-imposed and no abstentions. Um, we, and Borough President approved this project as well. So in summary, the applicant requests a special permit for certain re, large retail establishments, a city map amendment to add a street, an authorization for waiver of cross-access connection, a modification of existing topography and a modification of group parking facility regulations to facilitate a roughly fifty thousand square foot of retail and commercial development that could be compatible with and add support a wide variety of existing uses in the neighborhood. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Bravo. Um, let me see if there are questions from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that it's really cool to see a strong planner from Pratt presenting to a CPC.
Here, here. Other questions or praise of Pratt students? Praise Pratt, all praise of Pratt. Okay, good. Um, okay. Thank you, Kari. Congratulations and thank you for the presentation. And, uh, this item will be up for a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the second item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a, uh, special permit and city map amendment and post-referral review of authorization in the Bronx, uh, Community District Nine. And our presenter is Camilla Thomas. She's, uh, joining us on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This project is fourteen-hundred story avenue, York Studios. Next, the applicant, BR Twenty-Two Realty LLC, is requesting a special permit to modify bulk regulations, a city map amendment, authorizations to modify waterfront public access area requirements and a chair certification for waterfront public access area. If approved, these actions will facilitate the construction of a new four-story, approximately a hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred square foot television and film studio with a hundred and forty accessory parking spaces and one acre of waterfront public access area in the Soundview neighborhood of the Bronx, Community District Nine. Next, the development site is in the Soundview neighborhood along the eastern coastline of the Bronx River. This area is characterized by industrial uses along the waterfront near residential areas. The development site is also located on the northern border of Soundview Park. Notable uses in the surrounding area include the elevated Brockner Expressway to the north and the two hundred and five acre Soundview Park to the south. The surrounding area is served by the BX Five Bus Line along Story Avenue. The closest train station to the development site is in the Hunts Point Avenue Station on the Sixth Line in Hunts Point. Next, the proposed development site is comprised of lots one, eight and two hundred, together with the southern portion of Story Avenue that is proposed to be demapped. The total area of the development site is two hundred and seventy thousand, hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Land uses in the surrounding area include industrial, transportation, utility and manufacturing to the north and west and across the Bronx River, including warehouses for material storage and self-storage facilities within one to two-story buildings, as well as a recycling center. Commercial, institutional, mixed-use and fa, and multifamily residential uses are located to the east. Most of the mixed-use and multifamily apartment buildings range from thirteen to nineteen stories in height. The surrounding area is predominantly located within an M-one-one, M-one-two and M-two-one manufacturing zoning districts. An R-six district is located east of Colgate Avenue and north of Lafayette Avenue. Next, the proposed development would be the second and final phase of the York Studios' Michelangelo Campus. York Studios has been used as a film set for movies like John Wick and The Amazing Spider-Man Two. Next, the following photos show the current condition of the proposed development site. This picture shows a view looking south towards the entrance of the York Studio Campus. Next, here's a look towards the west. The entrance of the York Studio Campus is on the left and the proposed demapped street is in the background. Next, here's from the inside of the York Studio Campus looking south. The development site is on the right and the existing adjacent building is on the left. Next, here's overlooking the west bank of the Bronx River from within the development site. Next, and finally, a view from Lafayette Avenue looking towards the west to an entrance to the development site. Next, the proposed development will be a new four-story, a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and six square foot television and film studio building with a hundred and forty accessory parking spaces, as well as one acre of waterfront public access area. Next, the site plan shows the ground floor of the proposed building. Please note that the orientation of the drawings has changed. The north is now towards the right side of the screen. The proposed building will contain five studio stages that include accessory, accessory spaces. A hundred and forty accessory parking spaces will be provided at the cellar level. The building will set back from the property line and rise without a setback to a maximum height of sixty feet. Next, the applicant proposes to demap an unbuilt portion of Story Avenue. The portion is a hundred and seventy-seven feet long by eighty feet wide, with a total area of approximately thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. The southern half of the demapped portion would be acquired by the applicant and improved as part of the waterfront public access area. Next, the one acre waterfront public access area is comprised of the following. Next, a four thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine square foot upland connection located on the southern side, on the northern side of the development that connects the waterfront public access area with Story Avenue. The applicant is proposing to include an eight-feet steel picket fence gate at the entrance of the wat, of the upland connection. Next, the shore public walkway will have a total of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six square feet and will include a variety of seating, tables, bike racks and planting. Next, at the south of the development site, the unbuilt portion of Lafayette Avenue between the development site and Soundview Park will be improved by the applicant in consultation with the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation. Lafayette Avenue will remain a map street, but will be improved and maintained under Department of Parks jurisdiction. This area is proposed to include a total of seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three square feet and will serve as an alternate upland connection and visual corridor, following upland connection design requirements that include seating, planted areas and trash receptables. The applicant is proposing to include an eight-feet steel gate between the alternate upland connection and the shore public walkway. Next, to facilitate the expansion of the York Studio Campus, the applicant is requesting a special permit to modify bulk regulations, a city map amendment to demap a portion of Story Avenue, authorizations to modify area and location of elements of the waterfront, as well as design requirements, and a chair certification for the waterfront public access area. And now I will walk you through each of these requests. Next, first, a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution sixty-two, eight thirty-seven A to modify requirements of zoning resolution section sixty-two, thirty-four, B-three to allow a building height that is greater than thirty feet to accommodate specific facility and equipment needs of the studio. Next, an authorization to modify upland connection requirements to be located at an interval of a thousand feet along the shore public walkway greater than the maximum permitted. Next, an authorization to modify width of the upland connection entry area to be forty feet instead of the required fifty feet. Next, a series of authorizations to the following design modifications for more than twenty percent of the circulation path to be located beyond ten feet of the shoreline. This modification is necessary to provide continuous circulation path to the portions of the path that will fall under the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's jurisdiction. Next, to allow a reduced paved area along the upland connection of the entry area frontage adjoining the public sidewalk. The reduced width entry requires a five-foot paved area adjoining the public sidewalk that is proposed to be reduced from seventy to forty-two percent of the frontage to allow for better design. The reduction of the required five-foot paved area will also be compensated by widening circulation path that is proposed to be twenty feet wide at the entry area frontage and reduces gradually to twelve feet. Next, to waive seating within the upland connection. Since the upland connection at this area will have a limited square footage, the need for seating will be satisfied by providing seating within the immediately adjacent shore public walkway. Next, to allow the use of a steel picket fencing with the height of eight feet greater than the three feet required between the applicant-owned site and the waterfront public access area. The proposed studio will be accessible and utilized beyond typical business hours and beyond, um, waterfront public access area opening hours, operating hours. The proposed heights are the minimum modifications required to ensure the security of the equipment and occupants of the proposed studio. Next, to allow gates with a height of eight, eight feet greater than four feet to be located between the applicant-owned site and the waterfront public access area and the gate opening less than seventy percent of the total waterfront public access area in aggregate. The reduced openings represent the minimum modifications necessary to provide functioning gates free of obstructions within the circulation paths and openings at the proposed locations. Next, the Department of City Planning certified this application on February thirteenth of twenty-twenty-three. Bronx Community Board Nine held a hearing on March sixteenth and issued recommendation to approve the application with conditions. Bronx Borough President Gibson held a hearing for the application on April twentieth and issued fair, favorable recommendation without conditions on April twenty-ninth. The CPC public hearing for the application will take place on May The CPC public hearing for the application will take place on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Next, Bronx Community Board Nine approved the application with the following conditions. Collaborate with independent nonprofit organizations and union trades to facilitate and ensure that the construction workforce is from the area and from the Bronx. Include local and, local school and parks in planned community initiatives in collaboration with Bronx Community Board Nine. Commit to creating high-quality building service jobs that pay all building service workers the union standard wages and benefits. Collaborate with minority women contractors to provide oversight as an independent entity on behalf of Community Board Nine to ensure equitable particip- participation for minority and women-owned contractors with a preference placed on specific SIP codes and then New York City at large. Commit to include appropriate lighting to the exterior of the buildings, placing security cameras and twenty-four-hour on-site security. Limit the amount of filming, street parking permits to what is absolutely necessary, and assist tenant leaders with suitable notification of approved permits surrounding the studio. Advocate to hire local workers, businesses, and MWBEs in the day-to-day studio and production operations and recommend and request the pro- excuse me, recommend and request the proposed hours of operations for the waterfront public access area from dawn to dusk and the height of the fencing surrounding the WPAA at eight feet high. The community board believes that the proposed operating hours and fencing will allow the community to have access to this new public space while maintaining safety and security. Next, all these actions will allow the York Studios to expand and create a new waterfront public access area that would connect to Soundview Park. This concludes my presentations and I'm happy to hear your questions.
Thank you very much, okay, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Marine and then Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you Chair, Camilla, thank you for the presentation and welcome. Um, two, just two simple questions and, and something I want to emphasize, I think that the community board did mention it in terms of the studio having some co- some sort of relationship with the school right next door, which they fail to do to this day. I think it's a dis- you know, it's sort of a, um, an opportunity for you to work with the schools and NYCHA, because NYCHA is, is definitely up the block. There's also some new housing development. This is an opportunity to get local jobs in for the community as well as teaching film and television to, to, to a school to, to, to students that may be interested in following that profession. And then if you go to slide twenty-nine for a second, I don't think we touched on this because we were too busy thinking about the waterfront public access and the lighting and the height of the gate. But you have a big expanse of this facade that runs across the river that is just totally blank. And folks on the other side of the, of the river in Hunts Point are seeing this blank wall. I equate that to the Pepsi Building on the approach to the, to the Whitestone Bridge, there's this huge monolithic five-block and all you see is three big PepsiCo signs, which don't add anything, uh, of, of, of visual impact to the community. There are, um, some, uh, solar, uh, application, vertical solar application that could be used on this building to also comply with, you know, local laws that have been in, 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 enacted to try to mitigate the carbon footprint that we have. So I would really recommend that they take a look at that long expanse that from, from Hunts to Hunts Point. As we know, the food market is going to be growing and expanding, so that area is going to become very interesting. There's a waterfront along that market there as well. So I would encourage them to take a look at that facade and to try to do something interesting, visually interesting for the community.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up Commissioner, um, our office actually recommended and suggested the applicant do something with that facade, um, but they did not address her comments.
Thank you, I appreciate, yeah, well, you know, I, I, they should address the comments, so it's either yes or no. I mean, you have to have some respect for the question and for the individual asking the question, right? Just answer the question, if you're not gonna do it, then tell us and let us know, otherwise take the recommendations and apply them.
I will note they will, they'll be here on Wednesday and we, uh, you'll have a chance to, uh, pose that question directly and certainly encourage you to do that.
It will be my pleasure, thank you.
Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you very much Chair and thank you so much for the presentation. I, I wanted to build on, on Commissioner Marine's question, but also bring back a question that I believe it was Commissioner Carmani asked uh, when we certified this, which was, you know, whether the Bronx River Alliance and some of the environmental justice groups had weighed in in terms of, you know, some of the, the requested actions, specifically those that relate to the existing community base plans for the Bronx River Greenway and whether or not they are consistent with what the community had planned for over here. Um, so, so I'm wondering if, if you had a chance to, uh, or whether the applicant has responded or whether the applicant can respond to that when, when they come here. But the other question is, um, I, I'm really concerned with the, specifically the request to expand the minimum, um, a length of the facade in terms of a blocking public access. It, it does look long, and even though, you know, there's a significant, a level of investment in terms of the landscaping, uh, along the water, I'm wondering if, um, what are some of the discussions associated with the sustainability of the building, one question. I see a lot of flat roofs over there and I'm wondering if, given the provisions that we're seeing in similar or in other industrial areas across the city, the city of Yes presentation, for example, featured community solar in Sunset Park, um, whether there's been any discussions about how to utilize that flat roof for any type of community access, uh, to the waterfront, visual connection to the waterfront. If not solar, if not as Commissioner Marine mentioned, uh, even on the roof, like horizontally, uh, but also just, uh, other types of, uh, sustainability measures on the roof. Uh, this is a community that has been heavily planning for, uh, community gardens, local agriculture, food sovereignty. So I'm, I'm wondering if that conversation has taken place.
Um, not that I am aware of, because, um, part of this project predates me, but I believe the applicant, um, will have some answers in terms of, one, your question on the Bronx River Alliance, um, involvement in the project, and two, if they have any, um, ideas or proposals on what to do with the roof and how to connect it to the community and, like you said, um, other ideas that could happen in a very large and flat roof.
Thank you so much for that, and, and just in general, I mean, can you, can you share a little bit of what, whether there's been any discussions around improving or implementing sustainability measures in the building?
Not with us, there have not been.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Okay, thank you Camilla, with that, we're off to a public hearing on fourteen hundred story Avenue on Wednesday. Uh, Ryan, let's go to the next item.
The third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District eleven. Our presenter is Demetrius McLester.
Hello Demetrius. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Gradnick and Commissioners, hope everybody's having a good start to their week.
Thank you.
This application was certified back on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for a zoning map amendment from R five B to an R six A and a zoning text amendment to MAP MIH in order to facilitate a mixed-use development in Bensonhurst, Brooklyn, Community District eleven. Proposed actions will support a new six-story development, including twenty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight square feet of residential space comprised in twenty-seven units, seven of which would be income restricted, and eight thousand, one hundred and nine square feet of community facility area at sixteen fifty-six West Tenth Street. This area view is facing an east-west orientation, showing the development site in blue and the project area in orange. West Tenth Street is a narrow sixty-foot wide street, while Quinton Road and Kings Highway are both eighty-foot wide streets. And they, these streets intersect at the southern edge of the block and are east-west corridors that include commercial and residential uses within the surrounding area. Above is an area map for further reference on the existing land uses and built form. In two thousand and five, there's an area-wide rezoning in Bensonhurst, which changed the zoning from R six to an R five B within the project area. The overall goal of the rezoning was to prevent out of scale development in mid-block areas and support medium-density buildings along corridors. These are views of the current existing site on West Tenth Street. The current building is an older adult daycare facility named Better Living Community, Better Living Community Center, sorry. The community facility has been on-site since two thousand and thirteen and will utilize the ground and sub-seller floors once construction is completed. This development would include approximately twenty-seven dwelling units, seven of which would be income restricted to residents averaging eighty percent AMI and below in accordance with MIH option one. The ground floor would contain the existing older adult daycare, in addition to residential lobby, twenty-one hundred square foot, a twenty-five, twenty-one hundred square foot real yard for the adult daycare, and a parking ramp connected to a subsurface garage for residents. The ramp would be accessible via nine-foot wide curb cut. During the public review process, the applicant team modified the lesser ground floor plan to adjust the car shaft, to adjust a car shaft elevator to a parking ramp in an effort to improve maneuverability and flow of vehicles from the entrance. To facilitate the development, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to change R five B district to an R six A district, and the rezoning area will cover lots twenty-two, twenty-eight, and parts of lot forty-two on the west side of West Tenth Street, starting a hundred feet south of Avenue P and three hundred and twenty feet north of Kings Highway. Parking is normally required for fifty percent of the, of the market-rate dwelling units and optional for income-restricted units, without inclusionary housing areas. The applicant also requests a zoning text amendment to amend Appendix F and establish an MIH area with options one and two. Option one requires that at least twenty-five percent of residential floor area must be permanently income-restricted and affordable to households with an average of sixty percent AMI. Option two requires that at least thirty percent of residential floor area be permanently income-restricted and affordable to households with an AMI of eighty percent. Community District eleven voted to unanimously approve this proposal on April third, two thousand and twenty-three, with twenty-three votes in favor and zero votes against or abstained. Community Board eleven also noted that they want the applicant to explore the possibilities adding additional parking and sustainability options for the building, which includes the containment of garbage within the building. I have yet to receive the revote from the Borough President's Office. In conclusion, this is a certification that seeks a zoning map amendment to change an R five B district to an R six A district and a zoning text amendment to MAP an MIH area in unison with the rezoning area. They are proposing a new six-story development with approximately twenty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight square feet of residential space and eight thousand, one hundred and nine square feet of ground floor community facilities. Development would comply with MIH option one. This concludes my presentation and I'm ready to field any questions you may have, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, well done, um, we will move this to a public hearing on Wednesday. Ryan, let's go to item four.
Uh, yes, the fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment, also in Brooklyn Community District eleven, and our presenter is Lucia Reagan.
Good afternoon Chair Gradnick and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
This is a private application by Seventy-one twenty New Yutrikt LLC seeking a zoning map amendment from an R five C two-two to a C four-four L district and zoning text amendment mapping MIH to facilitate a mixed-use development. The development will contain a hundred units, thirty of which will be income-restricted with ground floor commercial. The project area is located at Seventy-one twenty New Yutrikt Avenue in the Bensonhurst neighborhood of Community District eleven, Brooklyn. The application was certified February first, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a view of the project area facing north. The proposed, the project area is located between two sixty-foot wide streets, Seventy-first Street to the north and Seventy-second Street to the south. The project area is bound to the east by New Yutrikt Avenue, an eighty-foot wide avenue, and a primary commercial corridor in the neighborhood. The elevated D subway line runs along New Yutrikt Avenue. Lieutenant Joseph Patricino Playground is located diagonally to the northeast of the project area between Seventieth and Seventy-first Street. The project area is in a R five C two-two zoning district. The surrounding area includes residential uses seen on this map in yellow. Institutional uses in the surrounding area are seen in blue and, uh, an industrial use in light purple is a seventy-five-foot tall Verizon Utility Building across the project area to the east. The D train, the D train Seventy-first Street Station has an entrance in front of the project area on the corner of New Yutrikt Avenue and Seventy-first Street. The B eight bus runs along Eighteenth Avenue and B four bus runs along Bay Ridge Parkway. The project is located within a transit and fresh zone, we'll now look at some project, uh, area images. Here is a view of the project area and development site, uh, facing north on the corner of Seventy-second and New Yutrikt Avenue. The development site outlined here in yellow is a vacant building which was once a drive-through bank. Moving north, this is a view facing northwest along New Yutrikt Avenue and features the accessory parking lot and building on the corner of New Yutrikt and Seventy-first Street. Visible on the right-hand side of the image is the D train Seventy-first Street Station entrance. The proposed development is approximately eight, eighty-five thousand square feet nine-story mixed-use building including eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one square feet ground floor commercial and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three square feet residential. At ninety-five feet, the proposed development would provide a hundred dwelling units, thirty of which would be income-restricted according to MIH option two. The proposed development would provide thirty-five required parking spaces in the cellar and fifty bike parking spaces on the ground floor. To facilitate this project, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment rezoning the R five C two-two to a C four-four L district. C four-four L is a zoning district specifically tailored for commercial corridors featuring elevated subway lines and is intended to ensure adequate light and air reach the sidewalk below the elevated rail line. It also offers increased flexibility in uses to allow commercial uses below and adjacent to the elevated train, providing the flexibility for the proposed development to have ground floor commercial with double-height ceiling along New Yutrikt Avenue, establishing a commercial base directly facing the subway and thereby ensuring that no dwelling units are situated immediately adjacent to the elevated rail line. The base is also intended to raise the residential, residential floors above the tracks which are then further set back. The west side of the development features an eight-foot side yard, as well as a required district transition of twenty, and a twenty-two-foot wide setback starting on the fifth floor to ensure adequate light and air to the neighboring R five district. The project also includes a zoning text amendment to Appendix F, mapping MIH options one and two co-terminus with the project area. Community Board eleven he- held a hearing on March twenty-eighth and voted to recommend disapproval of the project without conditions. Twenty-two voted in favor of disapproval of the project, one to approve, and zero abstentions, and stated in their CB letter that the proposed bulk height density infrastructure concerns traffic, garbage, school capacity will negatively impact and alter the character of the surrounding area. The Borough President held a hearing on the pro- on the project March twentieth. The department has yet to receive recommendations from the Borough President's Office. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, do we expect the Borough President's comments to come in before Wednesday?
Uh, I believe so, yes, we'll be sharing those when we, when they arrive.
Okay, um, and this community district, um, how many income-restricted units has been generated in this community district in the last, uh, ten years?
Thank you for the question, I believe it has been zero, oh, zero. Oh, David.
Uh, sorry, I'll jump in real quick, I'm not exactly sure on the exact numbers. We know that it's, um, definitely in the lower percentages in terms of Brooklyn community districts.
Okay, we'll ask on, we'll ask on Wednesday, um, I'm sure they will have that one at their disposal. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the presentation, looking forward, uh, to the applicant's presentation. I'm wa- I'm wondering if you can anticipate a little bit what's been the response from the applicant to the community board's comments?
Um, I'll let the applicant speak a little bit more to that, when they, when they come on Wednesday, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, okay, well, this will be up live on Wednesday, we'll look forward to it and, uh, we'll ask them to follow up on some of these items. Uh, with that, Ryan, thank you very much, um, Ryan, shall we, uh, move to any other business today?
Certainly, I, I do, I just, I'll just say that I, I clicked, I went to the EDDE, uh, tool and, uh, since, uh, two thousand and fourteen, the Bensonhurst and Bath Beach, uh, Puma essentially has seen a total of a hundred and seven new, uh, regulatory agreement, uh, developments. Um, there's been a three hundred and sixty-four preserved units in this, in this area.
So a hundred and seven new?
New, yeah, new construction since two thousand and fourteen.
That are income-restricted and pursuant to a regulatory agreement in a decade.
Yeah, I will also note that it's all in one income band, it strikes me that might be one development that occurred. Like, there might be a one building that's, that is, you know, sits somewhere in the neighborhood, we'd have to do more digging.
Two thousand and fourteen.
Since two thousand and fourteen, yeah.
Okay, thank you Ryan, what's, what, what, uh, what's next?
Sure, so, so just for future votes, I want to, uh, go through some things, uh, for consideration on Wednesday, May tenth. Well, staff have prepared a report on one eighty-nine ten Northern Boulevard, this is a commercial overlay. Scott Solomon, uh, he is here with a, um, staff recommendation.
Yes, good afternoon Commissioners, thank you. Um, so the Department of City Planning staff, uh, supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map uh, by establishing a C two-three commercial overlay on an existing R three-two zoning district. This would facilitate the applicant's proposed three-story building containing- This would facilitate the applicant's proposed three-story building containing commercial and community facility uses. In addition to the proposed development, other existing legal non-conforming commercial uses in the project area would be brought into conformance. DCP believes that the existing R three-two zoning designation without an underlying commercial overlay is inappropriate on North Boulevard, a major thoroughfare and commercial corridor. The agency believed that the use in bulk that would be permitted with a C two-three or R three-two appropriately reflects the existing local context and the proposed zoning would support locally oriented commercial and community facility uses. The establishment of the commercial overlay would limit future development to a low-rise scale consistent with the surrounding area. The agency further notes that providing zoning predictability to the subject properties provides a stronger land use rationale, planning rationale than the decades-long practice of ad hoc review at the BSA. A CPC report, again reflecting this recommendation, has been prepared for the commission. Thank you.
Okay, so also for consideration on Wednesday, we have PS zero-zero-five Richmond. This is Huguenot expansion of a school, seven Ballard Avenue and Murray Street, which are all actions pursuant to special districts on Staten Island. Staff have also prepared a report on six-thirty-ninth Avenue in Manhattan. This is a CB office space and Alike is here to discuss our staff recommendation.
Good afternoon Chair and Commissioners. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to acquire approximately one thousand nine hundred square feet of office space on part of the second floor of the thirteen-story building at six-thirty-ninth Avenue to facilitate the CB four's relocation. This acquisition is appropriate because the site is located near public transportation with major subway lines and several city bus lines within a short walk from the site and is well-equipped to allow CB four to effectively continue its duties. Thank you, happy to take any questions.
Okay, okay, so also continuing for post-hearing follow-up, we have the Ocean Crest rezoning and Alike will also discuss that.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good to see you back.
Long time no see.
The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map to facilitate the development of an eight-story residential building on, under utilized vacant land. The establishment of the R six A district is appropriate. The project area is approximate to transit and open space and the proposed development would reinforce the residential character of the neighborhood. The new units would be entirely income restricted pursuant to MIH and additional subsidy from HPD to provide lower levels of affordability as well as community facility space and would also incorporate flood resilient measures to a necessary and welcome addition to this flood-prone area. Thank you, happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I had asked at the meeting, the last meeting, about whether this was the maximum that could be built in the new rezoning if this particular developer opted not to build what we've seen.
Right, so the applicant responded and said one hundred and ninety residents would be the number that would occupy if a market rate development was built, but.
One hundred and ninety apartments or one?
Oh, I'll have to follow up with them insofar as the apartment count, but one hundred and ninety new residents.
So new units, is it a hundred and ninety-eight units in a new building?
He's not sure how many units.
Okay, okay, we'll follow up, okay, we'll follow up. This is not yet for both, so we'll have another discussion. Okay, thanks, Alike.
Thank you. There were also some additional questions about sustainability and resiliency measures. Has there been any follow-up on that? Yes, they actually did send a plan of their solar, an illustrative plan of their solar, solar images of the development, the roof plan, sorry, excuse me, sorry. And that can be provided by around Friday this week.
So we'll have another package?
Yes. Awesome, thank you. And on the evacuation stuff? I'll have to follow up with them on that. Thank you so much.
Right.
Thank you, okay.
Okay.
You have another one?
No, he's off the hook. The last post-hearing follow-up we have here today is for Forty-third Avenue demapping. Stephen Leonard is here to discuss.
Hello Commissioners. So the Department of City Planning staff supports the approval of this application, which would demap about fifteen hundred square feet from the south side of Forty-third Avenue in Bayside, Queens, to eliminate an encroachment of a privately constructed retaining wall from the city street. This would facilitate the resolution of DOB violations and the issuance of a COO for an adjacent residential structure. The proposed city map amendment would allow for a permanent solution to the encroachment issue. In addition, DOT has been actively involved in this application and has not opposed the demapping, offering proactive guidance and feedback on the proposed new street line.
Great. Commissioner Benjamin?
As you know, we received a letter from George Mahouses, who's a neighbor, who raised a number of issues about how the property and the retaining wall had been built, the extent of its non-compliance, kind of open and notorious movement of eight, six to eight feet, he alleges, of the wall from the property line of the owner. I know that you've said, and we've received information, that DOT is okay with this, but how do we respond? How does the department really respond to the level of the illegality and lack of contrition of the applicant with respect to the retaining wall? I know he doesn't like the option of irrevocable consent, but it is possible.
Yeah, that's a good question. The city, I think, has an interest in having all lots be completely compliant with all applicable regulations. This allows for a permanent solution to that and it's not cheap or quick or easy to obtain the approval that they're seeking. And it would also help to clear title so that the Department of Transportation and the applicant would not have to continue to administer and renew a revocable consent. I know it can be done for more than a year at a time, but it would still have to be continually renewed periodically and it would continue to cast a cloud over the title which would complicate financing and insurance. So this is a clean and permanent solution to that. As you know, DOT has not raised any objections. The resultant width of the mapped street would be over seventy feet, which is not uncommon for a two-way street with parking on both sides of the street.
Would the entire street? Mr. Mahouses alleges that the street narrows and so it's not seventy feet throughout the length of the street, it's just seventy feet at some locations within the street bed.
Well, it's mapped to eighty feet wide actually today.
Right.
Throughout the entire block. The carriageway is, and you can see it in the image there, it's forty feet on the eastern side and then the black line shows the curb line that narrows the carriageway to about thirty feet. But the resultant seventy-foot mapped width of the street would not prevent DOT from establishing an adequate carriageway for the traffic that's there.
And is DOT committing that this will remain a two-way street, which seemed to be some of the concern of the community board, or not?
DOT has not commented on any changes to the traffic pattern here as of yet.
Thank you for your answers.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Cerulo?
First of all, I just want to, I mean, normally this happens when we vote, but I want to associate myself with the sort of questions and concerns that were raised by Commissioner Benjamin. I have one question that I can't seem to remember the answer to. Is there, and beside the cost associated with sort of legalization, we'll call it, of this, and I'm typically a person who believes that everyone involved in a story, particularly the city, has some obligation to help legalize things just for public safety purposes if nothing else. There seems to be some sort of an offensive nature to the actions here that now our actions could actually sort of support in a way, so that's a little disturbing to me. But in addition to the legalization process that can grow out of our action, is there any compensation being paid to anyone by the applicant, to the city or to anyone else for now incorporating this encroachment into their own property?
Absolutely. The city map amendment and approval of it allows the city to dispose of the land, but the applicant would still have to purchase that land from the city at fair market value. They are also, according to the applicant and DOT, going to be reconstructing the curb line to remedy what is a bit of a substandard condition on this particular block with an unconsolidated curve there.
Okay, okay. I mean, the fair market value of this portion of the property, obviously, right?
Of the fifteen hundred square feet or whatever portion they end up acquiring.
Okay, thank you Stephen.
Commissioner Ramperchad?
Just a quick question on that. The reconstructing of the curb line has to be done prior to the sale or is that worked out in the agreement? Do they sell it and then do it? Do they have a timeframe to do it?
That can all be worked out in the mapping agreement, so once the, if the demapping is approved, the law department would be authorized to negotiate a mapping agreement with the applicant and they would poll all of the agencies. DOT is the one asking for this work to be done and the requirements of the mapping agreement would have to be set out before the map could be filed and provisions for ensuring performance can be incorporated into the mapping agreement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benjamin?
One last question. The retaining, was the retaining wall moved in order to make the building that was built legally compliant with yards, et cetera? Would they have been able to build that second residence if they had built the retaining wall on their own property?
I will need to look more into that. I did take a quick look at yards. It looks like they have ample space even without the extra, but I will double-check that because I want to make sure I'm not giving you inaccurate information.
Okay, because that might affect what I do.
Thank you Commissioner. Okay, all right, great. Thank you Stephen. Ryan?
There are no further items on our agenda for today.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much everyone for your time and attention and to the staff of the department for all their hard work and we will look forward to seeing you all on Wednesday morning. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks.